...of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. May we have a roll call for the city council, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Ajarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
And can we have a roll call for the agency, please?
Agency members, Friedman.
Here.
Ajarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Sir.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Draymond.
Here.
Mr. Kasakian, do you have a report?
The agenda for the November 10, 2009 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed Thursday, November 5, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. For you today is the Directors of Planning and Development Services regarding discussion and analysis regarding the proposed zone change application requesting an advertising signage overlay zone. One is motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Lamphane.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency, as the clerk has noted, we are here today asking you for direction on a request that has come from the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand. That is for an overlay zone for -- that would encompass the two properties for signage. The stated intent from both of these parties is to support the retailers that are inside. I'd like to introduce Roger Kiesel, Senior Planner, to go through this request with you and some of the arguments that go along with it.
Let me ask a question first.
Sure.
Is one of the major purposes this income to the Americana and to the Galleria? I mean, are they going to put them up free to advertise?
Yeah. It would be -- I'm certain that will have income to them.
Good afternoon. Staff has received an application from the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand requesting a zone change to enable creation of an overlay zone, allowing installation of wall signs that would not meet standards currently of the zoning code. The purpose of this presentation is to get your input regarding the zone change application requesting the advertising signage overlay zone. Both the Americana brand and the Glendale Galleria are requesting an overlay zone that will allow them to place wall signs on their respective buildings that do not meet the standards of a typical wall sign, including deviations from the number of wall signs and the size of wall signs currently allowed under our code. In addition, the Glendale Galleria is also seeking to allow non-accessory signs. Non-accessory signs are off-site signs. They're signs that carry advertisements that are not related to businesses or services that take place on the site. Currently, non-accessory signs are prohibited in the city sign regulations. And just as a point of clarification, I spoke with Ryan Hirsch, who's the General Manager of the Glendale Galleria last week after this report was released, and he stated that the non-accessory signs that they wanted to place on the Galleria would be limited to just advertising the movies playing at the theaters at the Americana brand. That was their intent in terms of the non-accessory signs that they're requesting.
That's ironic, don't you think? I mean, at this point, do you appreciate the irony in that? I'm sure you do, but I mean, I'm glad that we're at that point where we're all friends.
It may be a little ironic, but it also -- and I'll probably let the attorneys say it may be very difficult for us to do. So there are benefits.
Sure. If I could, irony, yes. However, there is a partnership that exists to promote the area, the entire area. The Galleria and the Americana feed off each other, and so there is a partnership that exists, albeit loosely. But your comment is well taken.
All right. There are both benefits and pitfalls to what the -- an overlay zone permitting a greater number and size of signs and non-accessory signs. Some of the benefits are fiscal. Permitted signs may provide an indirect financial benefit to the city. Allowing more and larger signs and non-accessory signs at the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand will reinforce one of the main purposes of redevelopment, which is bolstering economic development in the city. The proposed signs will also support the businesses located in the respective developments. Another benefit is visual interest and attraction. Larger and additional signs could provide interest in otherwise large blank facades on the buildings. Additionally, allowing signs in defined commercial areas just confined to the Americana and/or the Galleria could lead to the area becoming more interesting and drawing additional shoppers and tourists. Along with benefits are some pitfalls. First pitfall is setting precedents. The city's longstanding policy, long-term policy, has been to prohibit non-accessory signs and to work toward eliminating the existing non-accessory signs in the city currently. The city, Glendale, has been very successful in reducing the amount of non-accessory signs in the city. Allowing the portion of the request that would grant non-accessory signs would go against this long-term policy. Legislative finding supporting the approval of signs with -- that are too large or too many or non-accessory would -- they would need to explain why these signs are necessary and provide factual justification for permitting their installation at the developments while not in other areas of the city. So they would need to be specific why they're okay in one place, but not necessarily in another place in the city. And then finally, allowing these signs at the Americana and the Glendale Galleria could lead to similar sign requests in other areas of the city where it may not be as desirable. Another pitfall are legal issues. If non-accessory sign -- if a non-accessory sign ban is relaxed, enforcement of the sign regulations could be problematic. Some of the legal difficulties encountered by the City of Los Angeles can be attributed to the exceptions that their city council has granted for non-accessory signs in their city. Content restrictions. If the council is inclined to support a non-accessory signs, it should realize that content restrictions would be legally difficult. For instance, prohibiting billboards advertising liquor brands or adult-oriented businesses or signs that contain copy such as "Shot Pasadena" may be beneficial for a couple of reasons, maintaining community values or encouraging residents and visitors to spend their money in Glendale. It would be difficult to do and still comply with the First Amendment rights. So you all need to be aware of that. And then even if signage is restricted to onsite tenants and their products, that may allow, say, an absolute vodka billboard if, for instance, an onsite restaurant serves that in the restaurant. Finally, aesthetic impacts. Overly large signs can be unattractive and often are used as a substitute for architecture. They could also create traffic and safety concerns. Billboards generate enough revenue to justify -- or can generate enough revenue to justify ignoring maintenance of the building or even not occupying the building, which creates code enforcement issues. Finally, allowing signs could lead to a sense of over-commercialization of public and semi-public spaces, especially where the built environment is already dominated by a lot of advertising. Both the benefits and the pitfalls and the extent of these benefits and pitfalls are largely dependent on where and to what extent wall signs and non-accessory signs are permitted in the -- at the Americana brand and Galleria. I just have a series of slides now that show you just a variety of large signs located on buildings, mostly in the city of Los Angeles. This is a night -- whoops, I'm sorry. This is a night shot. This is at LA Live, and there are signs in there now. This is probably the most similar to what the Galleria and the Americana are proposing in their applications. I believe this is actually in New York, but it's showing how some of the windows potentially are blocked and how they're integrated in with -- or not integrated in with the sign.
3D?
I'm sorry.
There's like quite vivid.
I get it, Roger.
It is 3D? There's some sort of articulation?
Um, whoops. I'm sorry. Thanks, though.
Look at that.
Uh, you know, I'm not sure. It's hard to say. You're...
I think that they're in the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To see windows amongst them.
There are some signs that are 3D in nature now, so...
That'd be scary.
This is in New York. Sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
This is the Beverly Center. And these are like screens placed on buildings.
[laughing]
Staff recommends that if the council agency is interested in allowing larger wall signs, more wall signs and/or non-accessory signs at the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand, implementing an overlay zone is the most appropriate tool. An overlay zone imposes conditions different from the underlying zone and can be tailored in a way that is located only where you want it placed. The council prefers further limitations on areas where these signs, sign deviations can occur. It can further tailor an overlay zone more extensively and, in effect, make provisions for the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand that more appropriately address their unique characteristics. So an overlay zone can be even more specific than what's being proposed today and can look at the Galleria and the Americana separately. The challenge to providing -- the challenge in an overlay zone is to provide the solid reasoning to support why particular sign criteria are important in certain areas. The reasoning needs to justify why certain areas are included within the overlay zone and why other areas aren't. The factual basis and reasoning underlying the overlay zone sign standards will provide a basis for making future determinations about where such signs may or may not be These are possible or potential criteria for creating an overlay zone that the staff thought of, and they're fluid at this point, and they're largely dependent on the sort of input that we get from you. But some of the possible overlay zone criteria includes the overlay zone must be located in a redevelopment area. Allowing larger signs, more signs, and non-accessory signs could reinforce one of the main purposes of redevelopment areas, which is improving economic development in the city. The second is must have a minimum site size of eight acres. A minimum size will ensure that there is a sufficient area to prevent overcrowding of signs. There is a precedence for allowing larger signs in unified shopping centers, and they're allowed to have a larger sign area than smaller shopping centers. The third is must be devoted to intense retail activity and contain a minimum of 1.4 million square feet of leasable retail space. Limiting overlay zones in this manner would direct new signage toward the appropriate locations and reduce the likelihood of negative impacts in or near residential development. Additionally, large retail developments provide an architectural scale that provides a better context for oversized signs. Allowing large signs on smaller buildings introduces aesthetic, economic concerns that may -- or that can negatively impact development and maintenance of properties. The fourth bullet point, must contain buildings at least 50 feet in height. Again, this is to ensure that signs are on scale with the buildings. And then the last one is must not extend over windows, architectural elements, or details. This prohibition will ensure that the financial incentives or advertising revenue that results from these signs will not inappropriately cover the nice features of buildings. Location restrictions are an important standard that the council agency may consider incorporating within an overlay zone. Both the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand, in their applications, and those are in your packets, have identified specific sign locations in their zone change application. This is a map of the Glendale Galleria. There are five signs proposed on the entrance court of the central area front -- or Central Avenue frontage facing the Americana brand, and that's labeled "One" on the map. Two signs are located on the old Mervyn's Building at the intersection of Brand Boulevard and Broadway. One sign faces Brand, one side faces Broadway, and that's labeled "Two" on the map. The third, are two signs located on each side of the bridge that crosses Central, that's "Three" on the map. One sign is located on Galleria Way facing -- the Galleria Way facade of the parking structure facing Macy's and Broadway, and that's number four. Then finally, one sign is located on the food court entrance of the Galleria Way frontage, that's "Five" on the map. This is the -- and I should say, I'll step back. Both the Galleria and the Americana brand had these maps in your packets. We did some changes to them for the PowerPoint presentation just to make them clear for you all and for the people watching. In your packets are what they submitted, so... So the Americana brand, they have one sign located on the building facade facing the driveway leading to the parking garage, and that's "One" on the map. There's one sign located on the Central Avenue facade of the building near the intersection of Central Avenue and Colorado Street, and that's "Two." It's on the far corner. There are three signs located on the Colorado Street facade of the building near the intersection of Colorado Street and Orange, and that's "Three" and "Four" on the maps. And then the final one, there's one sign located on the Orange Street facade of the building near the intersection of Orange and Colorado. Should the council be inclined to support the overlay zone, council could simply approve the sign locations as they have been proposed by both entities, or it can impose requirements that alter the sign locations. Staff has several concerns regarding three of the sign locations proposed by the applicants. In the downtown plan, Brand Boulevard and Broadway adjacent to these developments are designated as primary pedestrian streets. Where creating excellent conditions for pedestrians is important. Overly large signs and non-accessory signs are oriented primarily for automobiles and are not really conducive to creating a pedestrian-friendly environment. Additionally, the intersection of Brand Boulevard and Broadway is an important intersection in the city. Currently, the southwest corner of this intersection is not developed in a manner that really is commensurate with its importance. Should large signs, whether accessory or non-accessory, be installed at this location, new development at this site may be financially infeasible. Finally, proposed signs should not be located, in staff's opinion, to extend over windows, architectural elements, those sorts of things. This prohibition will ensure that financial incentives will not result in covering of the architectural features. The sign that the Americana is proposing, which faces the -- which faces Brand, covers architectural features. And in looking at both -- in looking at the application, the council redevelopment agency should consider those things when evaluating sign locations. In addition to content restrictions, location restrictions, depending on your input and discussion, staff can also explore a number of other criteria as they relate to regulating signs proposed in the overlay zone, and that includes some that are listed up there, signed dimensions, framing, maintenance, those sorts of things. Okay. As previously mentioned, a zone change application has been submitted, and staff is obligated to study it and process the application as submitted with a recommendation coming from the planning commission with final review by the city council. Staff is requesting that the council and agency provide direction regarding the zone change application requesting the establishment of an overlay zone to allow larger signs, allow more signs, and allow accessory signs within the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand. If the city council redevelopment agency is inclined to support the request, staff recommends that the overlay zone be limited to addressing accessory and wall signs and that non-accessory signs -- the prohibition on non-accessory signs should continue. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the staff? Ms. Friedman, then Mr. Draymond.
I have a question about the frames for signs at the Americana. Were those part of the original design that was approved by, at the time, I don't know if it was the designer review board or if it was the agency? And if so, was the intention at the onset when that was proposed, was that clear that that was for signage?
Uh, the -- from what I remember, actually, the frames are part of the original architecture. And at some point, some signs were proposed for them, and then they were removed during the original review process.
Well, I guess my question is, if they were part of the original proposal and part of the original architecture, it seems clear to me, looking at the building, that they were kind of for signs all along. Was that not something that came up during the review process?
I believe the city manager...
I believe that the frames were approved as part of the design, whether there was a sign that went there or not. That's my recollection when it came back to the agency.
Mr. Draymond.
I was just curious about the comment, the concern about emphasizing pedestrian traffic and billboards or, let's not say billboards in this case, but large signage or signage that is more conducive for automobile traffic and thus encouraging automobile traffic. How do you square that with places like Times Square or other places that have very large signage but are specifically oriented for traffic?
I will have a stab at this, and Roger can add if he'd like. Well, I think Times Square is -- I think Alan Loomis last week gave a presentation of Times Square and said it's the granddaddy of all of -- a lot of these places.
And districts, yes.
And I think those were his words. So Times Square is this particular area with these large high-rise buildings with this rail -- well, it's not a square, really, but this odd-shaped thing in the middle of it. And at the original time, it was actually an auto-oriented -- if you look at it, it was an auto-oriented kind of a divergence or a fork that really was meant to reach the auto audience. I think it has evolved over the last several decades into something completely different, but still, you know, it plays uniquely. But you look at Southern California, which is a scale and the kind of movement of corridors and nodes of activity that we are accustomed to in Southern California, very different than New York in that sense. We see that Sunset Strip, for example, has these -- the kind of large signage that is -- from the get-go, they were meant to be auto-oriented. And that same tradition has continued in LA and in all of the new developments in LA that have included that signage, whereas the pedestrian scale really is at the eye level when you're walking on the streets, which is what we consider pedestrian-scale kind of signage and activity and interest. So that distinction is something that we attribute to the context in Southern California, and there are disagreements about that.
And so it can evolve?
It can evolve, yes.
Okay. And that's the geometry of it, too. It's not a square.
That's right. It's an odd shape.
Okay. Before we go to comments and any other questions, I have two speakers, Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill. Mr. Mohill, I assume you want to speak on this item, right?
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, Chair Draymond. My name is Margaret Hammond. I am here protesting against granting the change of zoning to allow these billboards on the Americana and the Galleria. How does this proposed change comply with Caruso's original contract? I have those contracts. My friends and I were sued because we stated that this was exactly what he was going to do, was put these billboards up and this signage up and also close the streets, Harvard and Orange. We had to go -- there were 17 points, and he won the two of the points because he said, no, he was not going to put up signs, big signs like at the Grove. And he was -- it was going to be four-by-six posters, and the streets were not going to be closed. Well, hello, I believe one street is now called Caruso Way, which is closed, and the other one is called Americana or something. So now imagine that, huh? And we now rent out our park for a fee of $1 a year, and it has kiosks all over, which we were not supposed to do in the original contract. And the public is not allowed to walk on the grass. Hmm, I wonder, isn't that marvelous? Now, all the merchants on Brand Boulevard had to remove their signs, except for Sealy and Forest Lawn. I remember because they were historic and were left. We paid millions of dollars to take down billboards in the city and especially the ones on San Fernando Road. And I believe that we traded off a big sign on the Five to get rid of all the billboards. I, you know, I sit through this stuff. Now, the other thing that comes up is the size, and again, back to the size of these signs and whatnot that were in the original contract. And I understand these signs are not going to be limited to just the businesses in there that are, if they're neon and all that, they could be Victoria Bras and Miller Lite Beer and whatnot to advertise. You have no control on what's advertised on them once you grant them the right to do that. And you go down to the Grove, I've heard so many people say, just go to the Grove. It's horrendous, the huge signs. They overpower you. And you are setting a precedent for the rest of the Glendale. After all, the Masonic Temple right across the street has a marvelous blank wall that they could put up, a huge, crummy sign. I mean, I happen to think they're ugly. I have fought with Lady Bird Johnson, I signed, I did whatever, because I think these signboards and these are not -- they are terrible, I think, as far as looking at them and the whole thing, that there's no reason for them, other than to make money for the people that want to put them up. Thank you very much. You know, Sunset Boulevard, here we come.
Mike Mohill.
these signboards and these are not, they are terrible, I think, as far as looking at them and the whole thing, that there's no reason for them, other than to make money for the people that want to put them up. Thank you very much. You know, Sunset Boulevard, here we come.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mike Mohill, President. Margaret, I love you, but on this one, I disagree with you. This is the 21st century. Big signs get me excited, get me real excited. You drive down the Harbor Freeway to the right and you see LA Live, wow, why don't we be that way? Hollywood Boulevard signs, wow. Times Square, wow. Now, we have to decide what we're going to be. Are we going to be a big boy or a little boy? Are we a bedroom community or are we a commercial center? We do need a convention center to go with our billboards now, and a major train center, and a trolley. Let's move on. Signs are exciting. Having seen what Mr. Caruso has done in the past, Margaret, I'm sure it won't be, I'm sure it will not be tacky. There's nothing I've seen at the Americana has been tacky. It draws people from all over the county, the city, state, and even the world. Europeans have been there, I've talked with them. They said, I've heard of, I've heard of the Americana, and I'm from Holland. Hopefully, Mayor, the Americana will upgrade the Gendo Galleria, make it a wonderful partnership with a drawbridge, eventually. The Americana is going to be the engine of Glendale. And yes, Margaret, you can't walk on the grass because for every hour of walking, like on a football field, it needs 10 hours of rest. I've already talked with the Caruso people, because I used to sell fertilizer, and my company's there right now, telling them, you have to let the grass rest for a few hours, because on the weekend, you have all the traffic. So normally during the weekday, they have people off. They change that saw frequently. Mr. Caruso does not want artificial turf. He's my kind of man. The feeling of artificial turf is not the same as real turf. And again, the signs that Mr. Caruso would put in would be exciting. Again, whatever he does, I have no, no question about it. After all, again, he will be the engine of South Glendale next to our convention center. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's begin the discussion, or questions? Or not? I'll start.
Question. Question.
Mr. Weaver.
Does staff know the billboard, Disney billboard next to the 134, what their monthly lease is or rent? How much they make?
You're talking on Interstate 5?
Yeah.
Is that the one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 5, yes.
I'm not aware of what their monthly is.
It's clear channel. So how much would it make approximately?
Again, I don't know, Mr. Weaver, the exact number of that billboard.
Would it be more than $1,000?
Yes.
More than 10?
Most likely.
More than 20?
Probably.
Probably 30 or more?
More than that.
Maybe 40?
Mr. Weaver, my guess is it's in the hundreds of thousands.
I'm just kidding, because 15 or 12 times 40, that's a lot of money. Thank you, that's my only question.
Okay, well, for me, to get the discussion going, oh, it's jumping here, I'm okay with the signs on Central and Colorado, both at the Galleria and the Americana. Those are awfully busy intersections, they're really just through streets, so I don't have a problem with them. Now, the signs on Broadway, I'm sorry, the signs on Brand, well, Brandon Broadway for the Galleria, and then on Brand for the Americana, that I'm not convinced is a good idea for a number of reasons. The idea of having non-accessory signs, I'm against. I don't think, these signs should directly impact the merchants and the businesses in these two, in these two developments. So I'm not interested in bringing in, in bringing in advertising that doesn't pertain directly to the site. I think the overlay zone is probably the best way to, to go, and so that it doesn't spread to other parts of Glendale, because I don't believe, I'm against visual pollution is what I call it. And while it is appropriate in certain locations, I mean, Times Square, of course, it's part of the charm, so to speak, and even the Sunset Strip, I think it gives a certain type of glitter, especially at night. During the day, it doesn't work too well, but at night, everything stands out, and you've got that feeling of, sort of electricity and atmosphere. So anyway, I'm pretty comfortable with it. Now, is there any way that the city could, I mean, Mr. Weaver was making the point, the kind of income that this might produce for both, for both development, is there some way that we can structure this so that the city gets a, a little bit of income, or?
Looking at each other, see who responds.
Incorporate a permit fee.
We could look at a permit fee, that's exactly what I was going to say.
But that's what I mean, that's a one-time fee, and that's it. Yeah. Not a monthly income. Yeah. Okay, so anyway, that's pretty much where I'm at. I think it's a good idea for Colorado and Central. I think it'll help the businesses. Anything we can do to bring people in makes, makes sense to me, but I don't think Brand sort of has that as the right place for these signs. Mr. Weaver.
I'll go. First off, Glendale is not New York, Glendale is not Beverly Hills, Glendale is not The Grove. Glendale is different. I've sat here, and two or three times, we've gone through the process of removing billboards out of this city, because we didn't like them. These signs approach the same size as billboards, only they're not on legs, they're on sides of buildings. So I don't know where we're going, if, having taken them all off, we're allowing to come back in, and I believe we're setting precedents. We allow it here, there's going to be other buildings going to come in, in the future, and say, oh, what about us? Americana process we went through, I thought I remembered quite clearly the big debate on signs on the walls, especially along Colorado, whatever, not to have the big signs. Yet, when it was built, I saw the frames. It's pretty obvious from the beginning what I thought would happen in the future. Now, we have a joint process, joint venture between Americana and the Galleria to make some money. And when you look at the Galleria, one of the largest-attended gallerias in Southern California, greater attendance than Disneyland. And the Americana that has already gathered national attention, to have to put signs up to lure people in, there's no logic. There's no logic to it. As far as the streets closed, Margaret, that was done during the project. I fought to close those streets. With all the young kids in there and the families, they have the little babies and the young ones, like my granddaughter, running around, having to worry about traffic on Harvard or Orange, and the pollution from the cars, and the noise, no, that was a win for me, as far as I, far as I'm concerned. Inside, if you go in the Concierge, with the Concierge Building, to your right, is a nice, beautiful mural framed of California. To the left, by the escalator, is a large frame, nothing in it. I think, if you go up the first level of the escalator, another large frame, nothing in it. And I've thought many times, well, there's going to be something in it eventually, I don't know what. It's just logical it's going to be in. But those are internal to the structure, not external on the outsides. I'm down there at least three times a week with my family, and many times, I use the elevator shaft that's right off the entrance and off of Harvard. Signs up there promoting Excelsior. But every time I get on that elevator, I can't see out the glass windows because of the sign on it. And I distinctly remember, at the time, asking the designers, why the glass on the buildings? Very simple answer, women do not like to get in elevators where the walls are all covered. They need to know that people can see them in case something happens in an elevator. That's very clear. What I won't sign there is violated it for months. I understand you're trying to market, trying to get the condos sold. That's something else. But I looked at it as a short term, and it would be eliminated. Now, I see this as being purely an economic adventure, to make some money in these hard times. I don't blame it. But I just don't think they belong there. I really don't, especially in Brand and Broadway. It just, that doesn't cut it for me. The ones framing the, the theater, maybe, but again, it's been said, how are you going to control the taste of what's put in there? You don't know, that's the first thing I wrote down, taste. You don't know what they're going to, what's going to be put on the signs. I just think it's the wrong way to go. And I've agreed with Mr. Caruso on virtually everything, all the way down the line. But this time, it was quite obvious what was going to happen in the future. Almost a little over a year later, here they are. I'm sorry. I can't go along with it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Who's next?
Mr. Nungarian, and Ms. Friedman. Well, I'm going to just sort of give you some background on my thought process. We were here last week as a redevelopment agency, trying to think of ways to revitalize our downtown, to make it more of an entertainment zone. Several of the locations and venues that our planning staff highlighted to us as perhaps examples of what we could aspire to be, or venues that have certain elements that are very contributory to an entertainment zone, were Times Square and the Sunset Strip. Both of those locations have billboards. This is the downtown central core. I, you know, I don't see anything wrong with adding some excitement to our downtown core. Twice a year, three or four times a year, perhaps Macy's unveils their big, you know, twice yearly men's sale, or, you know, holiday sale off their building. It's a huge, it's a huge banner, advertising their sale. I don't see anything wrong with that. It's right on the side of their building. Now, is that considered an accessory sign? That is. Is the issue here whether the advertising is an accessory?
One of the issues.
It's one of the issues.
Size and location.
So, if they had a big ad for Coca-Cola on the side of the Americana, and inside the Americana, they serve Coca-Cola, is that an accessory sign?
Yes. Goods or services, arguably, accessory.
Okay, so, so basically, looking to, probably more apt to the Galleria, any type of product within some reason could be deemed an accessory sign. You know, Calvin Klein underwear ads? Well, if they sell underwear at the Americana, it's certainly permitted. I understand that, so, so for me, that, I'm not sure where, by splitting the, you know, the issue and trying to redefine whether it's accessory or non-accessory, I still see a broad scope of advertising available, if it's, even if we limit it to, to accessory. So a couple thoughts are in my mind. If these billboards go up on the properties and they, the owners derive revenue, would that increase the assessment of their properties for tax increment that we could obtain as a redevelopment agency? I would argue, yes, it would, because their values largely are based on income streams. And if these, Mr. Quintero, or the mayor raised the issue of, is there any, any way we could benefit from that? Well, I think that would be a benefit to the city if they are assessed, reflecting the increased revenue that they have. And if it's not that, it could be sales tax. So, the city does get something. We took away the billboards throughout the rest of the city because they were very ugly. The structures that they were mounted on were ugly. I can't, except for that one, I didn't even want to go there, but there was something on Glendale Avenue that we had a few complaints over regarding adult entertainment. I think the rest of the, the advertising that we saw throughout the city on those billboards was pretty run-of-the-mill, certainly, certainly not offensive, along the lines of you, what you'd see if you picked up a, a magazine and went through and looked at some of their, their print ads. I think we need to remember that these two establishments are one of the top sales tax generators for the city, that they do help us out. And we help them out as well. We do clearly have a relationship. The, you know, to be honest, I'm ready to give it a try, but to have a very short sunset clause on this by permitting the, creating the overlay zone, if the advertisement gets out of hand in terms of the content or the gaudiness, the overlay zone would die within a short time, say a year. And should it be, on the other hand, should it be done tastefully and without much objection, we would also have the option to extend that later. I can't call on you, but I could. I believe there's a question that, if it's pertinent to my.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and Agency, just to respond to what you suggested concerning the content and the gaudiness, and as a reminder, that the regulations that we impose need to be content-neutral, viewpoint-neutral, we can impose reasonable time, place, and manner regulations on the signs, their location, their size, but in terms of the content, we have to be very careful to maintain neutrality in terms of what type of advertising they contain, whether they, it be commercial or political types of speech due to the First Amendment activity, First Amendment protections, so.
And that's my point. Should they, should they engage in advertising that is permitted under the First Amendment, but that we, as a council, find distaste, or a community find distasteful, we can cancel the overlay zone? I mean, clearly, that's within our purview.
Not based on a content reason? No.
As, as a overlay zone in general, we would be required to maintain it?
You'd be, you'd be regulating it on the basis of the content of the speech, and that's not permissible under the First Amendment.
In other words, you may be able to unwind the zone for non-speech-related issues.
Non-speech-related, right.
But if your, if your intent is to try to unwind this because of the content of the signs, that would raise probably successful legal action against them.
So your, what your, your point is that a non-accessory, should we open this up to non-accessory advertising? The door's wide open?
It's wider open than it is with accessory.
We should back off a little bit, because the regulation of content is only, it's subject to what's called the strict scrutiny standard, so there must be a compelling governmental interest to regulate that speech, and it has to be very narrowly drawn. So in the, in the instance of nudity, things of this nature, where the regulation of that type of exposure has been found to be appropriate, there is a compelling government interest to regulate certain types of offensive, obscene types of communications.
How did we get around that with our bus benches and our bus stands?
I'm sorry, how?
How did we get around that with our bus stands?
How do we get around?
Well, I believe we have some restrictions on.
Content.
On the content. Was that a, is that a contractual basis?
It's actual contractual basis with the vendor, and those are our, those are essentially our proprietary structures. But there are questions about that.
Can we enter into a contractual agreement with the properties?
It creates, the whole issue of billboard signage is an area that is far broader than just accessory. just accessory versus non-accessory. The inroads that some of these signed, both distributors and entities that want signage have been trying to make or break into through the courts, is this differential that you have between favoring one business over another, or favoring one location versus another. The courts have been somewhat narrow in allowing that in this, in the Ninth Circuit. That's why the non-accessory versus the accessory dichotomy. But you run into problems where you start contractually trying to allow certain businesses or locations to have signs, and then you preclude others contractually from having them. But it does become somewhat problematic. It, it's an area that is getting great attention right now by those companies that either want and/or distribute or make, whether it's super graphics, digital signs, or other large billboards. It's becoming a real, directly a hotbed for litigation.
What you're telling me, just briefly, is that should it be opened up to non-accessory, we really lose control of what can be placed on there as advertising?
What we're saying is, basically, what the courts have said in this district is, accessory versus non-accessory is probably the only area that you've got some control.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one further comment. I think most of you remember when the Brand Boulevard cars wanted signage on the 5 or the 134. I remember, right, didn't we come down, even looking at putting something on the side of the water power structure buildings down there, and that was denied? Community didn't want it, council didn't want it. And those were big signs on the building, so...
Okay, Ms. Friedman, followed by Mr. Drayman.
Well, this is an interesting discussion, because it really gets into the heart in a lot of ways of where we are now as a city and where we're gonna be in the future as a city. And certainly, we're talking about two businesses that are of tremendous economic importance to the city of Glendale, and every single person who's sitting up on this dais wants nothing more than for them to thrive. I have made a lot of notes throughout the staff report, which is a lot more extensive than what was given in the PowerPoint, and raises a lot of very interesting issues and concerns and benefits. I'll only go over a few of those, but before I do, I'll throw something out that I haven't heard mentioned yet, which is probably the primary concern to me personally in this entire discussion, which is, first, I understand the argument about visual excitement and that maybe these signs can create a sense of visual excitement. I'm not sure in my mind where visual excitement and visual interest turns into visual clutter and tackiness. I don't know where that line is, and that troubles me. Secondly, I'm also very concerned about the commercialization of our visual corridors in the city and the commercialization of people's experience of their environment and of the city. I remember reading something interesting once about somebody who was an upper-middle-class person but took the bus a lot, and their children took the bus a lot. And one day, they, the children came home and said, "We can't take the bus anymore. We try to study and we can't. There's television sets, running ads all the time, there's everywhere we look, there's advertisements, and it's a really unpleasant experience." Now, I'm not suggesting that these billboards, as proposed, do that. But again, where is that line to where something that's a nice pleasant streetscape becomes a road of advertisements? That's why people don't like billboards, and we fought very hard in the city to get rid of billboards. Now, on the other side, I think that on some of these large buildings, you know, having a sign, I can see where, you know, it would kind of liven up a building that maybe isn't designed on its own to be very lively. I don't know whether that was on purpose or not at this point, it doesn't really matter. But when I think about the Colorado side of the Americana, for instance, it's a big blank wall for all intensive purposes, and it really needs something. I wish that that had been dealt with when this project first came into the city, but it wasn't. For whatever reason, it was always, it was allowed to be a big blank wall, and now we kind of have to deal with it. The Galleria is not an unattractive building, and it's made out of brick, and it's kind of pleasant, but it's impossible to know what's inside of it unless you kind of know. I can see their argument for having signage on these buildings that announces the stores that are inside, because it's very difficult to know. If you're coming for the first time, let's say, and you want to go to a particular store, I don't know how you would know if you're going to the Americana or to the Galleria, because it's difficult to know. I don't have a problem with any of these signs on the insides of these, of these complexes. One of the proposals from the Galleria was to have a sign between their parking lot and their building. Because people that are on the outside don't see that, I don't have any problem with that. But on the outside of these buildings, I'm not sure. I'm still trying to grapple with the effect of these large signs. Times Square's been brought up. I've spent a lot of time in going through Times Square and in Times Square. It's a completely erroneous comparison. The scale is completely different than anything we have in Glendale, besides the fact that the buildings are, you know, 50 stories tall. It's also a very large, open space. It's a huge, open plaza, really, that has cars in it, although now, I think they've blocked it, I don't think they allow cars right now. So, when you're inside of that, the whole point is that you're kind of in awe, you're in this giant space, and you have these giant billboards around you. It doesn't equate to being on Brand Boulevard with a couple three-story buildings on one side, maybe in a five-story building on the other. In fact, people, that road is so narrow, Brand Boulevard, four lanes, I'm not sure if, with the signs on Brand, how easy it's even gonna be to see them from the street. The staff brings up some good concerns about traffic issues, if people are breaking to look at signs. Definitely, the non-accessory signs, in my mind, are off the table. I don't see how we could go for that. If we were to have some kind of signs, I would be most comfortable with signs that were very specific to individual stores. My worry about non-accessory signs is that when you have a store like Target that pretty much sells everything under the sun, you can have signs for everything under the sun, and they really bear no location, no relation then to what's inside of the building. I see more of an argument for signs that announce what your stores are than signs that are selling Pepsi and, and all the other things that are advertised on any billboard all over Los Angeles. I keep thinking about Koreatown in Hollywood, which has so many signs and is so blighted, and what an unpleasant experience it is to go, to go down Western Avenue. And I don't think it does anyone any favors, the Galleria or the Americana or Glendale, to open the door up to that happening. Now, if Planning Commission can come up with ways of restricting it to where that's not an issue, I would feel a lot better. I'm worried about other areas, like the Grand Avenue of Cars, maybe, you know, wanting to, to do something similar. I'm also concerned about projects coming forward in the future and designing buildings around large signs, instead of just designing nice buildings. Let me just take a quick look through my notes, if you don't mind. Again, onsite products, I think we need to be sure about how we define that. I think that if we're gonna do that, I would really prefer to see them very closely linked to individual stores. But if we have problems controlling content, I don't know how that works. At one point, I had heard talk about a proposal to allow community space, but I don't see this in the staff report, so is that something that's not on the table anymore? That some of these signs would be open to the community or given, granted to the community?
We could certainly ask the, the applicants to do it. I think there was an issue with requiring it. I'm looking at the chief assistant who had the conversation with...
Okay. You know, in terms of the content, I'm less concerned about having an alcohol sign, for instance, than I am about just what the signs look like. And, you know, are they gonna be, you know, nicely done? And I don't know how we control that, because we can't control content. So, we might, they might be signs that, you know, are really nice and classy and beautiful, or they could be signs that are just a lot of text and garish, and I don't think that we'd have any control over that. Otherwise, I agree with a lot that's in the staff report. I think they did, staff did an excellent job of putting this together. So, that's not a very clear answer, but at least I've given you some of my...
Overhead, overhead.
I've given you some of my, I've given you some of my concerns and, and, you know, I agree that, you know, maybe some of the smaller signs certainly could work, and also, I don't have a problem with doing accessory signs that cross both buildings, so that if the, if the Galleria wants to advertise a movie that's at the Americana, I don't personally have a problem with that. So, if there's a, you know, if we can tie them together in some way into one integrated sign program, that might be, that might be okay.
Mr. Drayman.
Okay, well, put that on the category of wayfaring signs as well. We're headed in a direction, I think. By the way, Mr. Ghani, Mr. Kiesel, my erroneous comparison was not that I really think that this overlay zone is the same as Times Square. I studied in New York, got a degree there, got a lot of shows there. I know Times Square. My point is strictly the concept that was presented, that somehow, large signage is somehow an exclusive concept to foot traffic. So, not only that, but I just wanted you to know that we were listening, so... Anyway, I have some questions before I get to some comments. I have some questions, so let me first start with, is there someone from Galleria or General Barrow that can answer a couple of questions?
We've got Ryan Hirsch and Rick Lemo are both here.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Hirsch.
How are ya?
I'm fine. Couple of questions. This one image, this one, which is the signage proposed on Central Avenue, is that the exact same signage that we saw there when, what was it?
Last year.
May or so of 2008?
It is.
And that went up this time, whether intentionally or inadvertently, went up without the permit process coming to play, correct?
It, it did, unfortunately.
And then that went away?
Correct.
Yeah.
For the, for the October deadline that was given to us.
Okay. But this is the same signage?
This is to give you an idea of what the signage may be. It may vary a little bit.
Well, here, here's my, my point. I don't mean, is it the exact same copy? Is it advertising the exact same things? Is it the same kind of signage?
It is.
In other words, it is one thing to look at something like, like that, that's framed and lighted, and so on, and that. Those have a more temporary look. They look like, basically, vinyl banners that are maybe stretched on a frame. It's hard to tell from this particular photograph.
If we were to move forward with this, it'd be similar to the renderings, where it's framed, nice lighting, it'd be a first-class manner.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was one question. My other, and I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Hirsch. I do also want to ask a question of Mr. Lemo. And actually, Mr. Hirsch, I am gonna have another question for you, because it's gonna be the same one that I'm gonna ask Mr. Lemo. Two questions I'm gonna ask Mr. Lemo, I'm also gonna ask you, Mr. Hirsch. One is, is there anything you wanted to, anything you wanted to add that you want us to know? And that's question number one. Question number two is similar to the question I just asked Mr. Hirsch. We've got some unpermitted signage out there with Americana right now. And when the unpermitted signage came related to what was put up on Galleria, we gave them the option of making it legal by the, let's see, I think it was the fourth quarter of that, by October, beginning of fourth quarter, or it needed to be taken down, they opted to take it down. I think you know the signage I'm talking about. Again, how it came about, I'm not so concerned about as much as where we're going with it and what we're doing with it. Can you comment on that?
Yes, sir, I can. We've begun the permit process today for those signs. So, I would anticipate by week's end, that process should be in full force with all of our paperwork properly done and submitted, but we have begun that permit process today.
And if that ends up being that we, as a body, say, "That needs to go," is Caruso affiliated and prepared to say, "Okay"?
Absolutely. No doubt about it.
All right. The other question is, relates to, is there anything else that we need to hear from you? And I'm gonna ask Mr. Hirsch the same question.
Yes, sir. First, I want to thank staff. They've been very helpful in the overall process, but extremely kind and patient as walking us through the process as well. I would like to point out four or five really important points. On their own, there's only one point that really makes any difference, but I'd like you to be aware of them. First of all, Mr. Weaver brought up a very good point. Will these signs raise revenue? They certainly will. I think it's important to note that whether you're at the Galleria, or you're at the Americana at Brand, you can't really raise revenue without having a positive impact on the city. Both as Councilmember Najarian pointed out, through property tax increment, through sales tax, and also in regards to the Americana, there is a shared revenue provision. So, if we are successful, the city will be financially successful as well. We support accessory-only, mainly for the reason that it's easier to control it, both from a precedent standpoint and somewhat from a control. But let's talk about that for just a minute. Councilmember Friedman and Najarian both expressed content concerns. And unfortunately, because of the way some of our constitutional law is written, there are no absolutes. However, regardless of any agreements, regardless of any rules or any laws, it really comes down to taste and trust. It would be my hope that with the length, even though it has been relatively short, that we have done a good job of showing that we can limit ourselves, from a good taste standpoint and also from a trust standpoint. And so, for that reason, I would say that if there are commitments that we can make freely, without any coercion by council or staff, we're prepared to do that, whether that means we'll eliminate alcoholic beverages, whether that means that we will specifically identify this particular item is available at the Americana at Brand, for those who may not know. But I think it's important to, to pay attention to something that you brought out, Councilmember Friedman. A lot of people may know that we exist, and certainly, I haven't run into a Southern Californian that doesn't know the Glendale Galleria exists, but a lot of people don't know what's inside there, because that changes. And the products that are in there are important. So, we are supporters of accessory-only signage, but I also think it's important that behind any agreement, there has to be taste and there has to be trust. In regards to the sign facing Brand and Harvard, it's covering about three and a half stories of a glass elevator. That is certainly a window, there's no doubt about it, but that's an important sign as far as drawing the public in. And so, I would ask you to please consider that. In, in regards to our community space, the only time that the lawn is ever prohibited is when we're trying to bring it back and make it look, look right. And last but not least, and I know this is only a peripheral benefit, but it's a big deal to us. I don't want to go through everything that happened over the last eight, eight years, but the fact that we can, on a day-to-day basis, both for marketing and for the good of the community, Ryan Hirsch and I sit on the Glendale Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors together. I, for one, for someone who spent nine years here, I am very proud of the fact that we get along and we work together well, and we'll also keep each other honest in this process. We are two businesses working well together for the good of the city and for the good of one another. And so, for that reason, I would say that I would rather that this application be applauded as an opportunity for us to continue to do so in the way that you would expect, as opposed to, you know, letting the wrong underwear ads slip through. And there's, there's no Victoria's Secrets models that are gonna be highlighted on the side of our building. With that, I remain available for questions.
One, one last question to you, and I will ask the same question as Mr. Hirsch, and that is, Mr. Najarian raised an issue that I think some of us were also going to ask, and that is about a, a, sort of a trial run. Although my idea of a trial run, the, the length of time may be different than what Mr. Najarian was suggesting, longer, actually. But the, the bottom line is, how does Caruso-affiliated feel about the idea of putting in these signs for a year, two, year and a quarter? And should they not work out, the concept not work out, or should the, some element of the concept, location, or size, or something, not work out, the aesthetic in some way, to removing them or altering them?
That's a great question, and...
Because that also bears on cost as well, so...
I, I will be able to give you an answer without the benefit of the extreme legal knowledge that our city attorney has, but I can tell you this... that our city attorney has, but I can tell you this. I think that we would be fine, I think you have to have a two-year sunset if you want a sunset. And second of all, I think it'd be great for us to have metered points along the way. So that, let's say, for example, if a year and a quarter, okay, we told you there was an ad here we didn't like, you know, how did you handle, how did you handle that? Or we got, let's take council out of it. We received complaints about this ad. How are you going to handle this ad? So that it's not a governmental function, but realistically, we're trying to be good citizens and we're trying to serve our guests. And we don't want our guests to be uncomfortable when they're bringing their families, particularly those between 10 and 15 years old, to see something that they don't want them to see on the side of our building. So we're fine, I think two years is a fairer sunset clause because contracts usually run in one-year increments and they're not all going to be, you know, signed up at one time. So if there was a sunset and there was a way to do it legally, two years as long as along that way, maybe on a quarterly basis, staff meets with us both and says, you know, here's what's going right, here's what we're hearing this complaint about. That way, it's never tied to the city, it's what the public is telling us and we'll do our best to solve that. I hope I answered your question.
Not exactly.
All right, what did I miss?
Those were all elements of it. But how does Caruso affiliated feel about, you know, it has, the time has elapsed, it, the general consensus is it is not working. Is that something, that element of creating a sunset clause as part of this, would that, would that be something that Caruso affiliated would support?
Yes, providing that the period of time is long enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hirsch? Similar questions? You wouldn't mind?
Yeah. I guess I can first start off by sunset clause. You know, I'd have to talk with our vendor, but I definitely think it's something that we could pursue. Like Rick said, if the amount of time is right and the initial investment. Again, we're going to try to do this, well, we are going to do this in a first-class manner. And so with that initial investment, with the framing, the lights, that we can create the amount of time that you guys are looking for, it's beneficial to both parties, absolutely.
All right.
Second thing, Rick stressed six points. I really want to stress two. Our retailers are having a tough, tough time right now. This is probably one of the toughest retail environments that we've seen. Whenever I go down to the city, they always say, what can we do for you? This is your example to do something for us. Our retailers need you, sales are down, they're hurting. Second thing is, as far as, you know, the appearance goes on the building, I believe there was opinion written last year, they talked about how the mall looked like a fortress. This is something to soften it. Again, we're going to do it in good taste. Nothing but a first-class operation from both the Galleria and the Americana. Just hope for your support.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to make some comments. Let me jump to the sunset clause first. I agree with the concept that Councilmember Najarian raised. A year won't do it for me either, but for a different reason than was mentioned by the representatives of the two retail centers. I think it, we're starting, we're looking at starting this after fourth quarter. And it's hard to know exactly when Americana or Galleria, should we approve, some, approve this in some form or other, when that's going to actually be up on the building, whether it will have an, whether we will have the opportunity necessarily in 12 months to see a full four retail cycles, first, second, third, fourth quarter. But we're starting after fourth quarter has already begun. So that, to me, is, I would look for something at least 16 months, perhaps two years. And there's also the factor that was raised about their contractual issues beyond our control or their control with regard to the vendors themselves as to how long they can, or how, what minimum amount of time that they can do this. That aside, it seems to me this is really two different issues. It is, it is, do we want to do this? Do we want to take this step and make this change, allow this kind of signage, create an overlay zone, et cetera? And then the second issue is if we do that, what are these signs to look like? And in that second part, to me, there is the immediate distinction that, again, Councilmember Najarian started to make, and I'd like to follow up on. It points to the exact differences between these, this signage and the billboards that Margaret and others have talked about. Not only were they, these billboards that we have been removing, were they ugly? But the only real control we had over them was the ability to try to negotiate to just have them removed. Here, we have the opportunity to create the environment, to have input with regard to their design, their location, and to some degree, the content, not in the legal sense, boy, you can just see this whole side of the dais, wincing and cringing. I'm speaking in a loose sense in terms of that kind of trust that the representative from Americana spoke of. And that kind of, that deals with taste, again, good taste. But absolutely with regard to location, design, construction, and so on. I can't remember who, but someone made the comment that, you know, it's, this is being driven purely by, by a desire for revenue. Well, for goodness sakes, we're talking about two of the largest retail entities, certainly in our city, but also in the local region. The idea that they would be actually looking at the bottom line and looking for means of revenue is not exactly shocking to me. But, so I don't, I don't consider that a factor here. It is, it is a valid observation, but it, to me, is just not a factor in my decision-making. I expect that they're not going to entertain pursuits that don't help their bottom line. It just, I would, I would be seriously questioning them if that were the case. But in terms of accessory and non-accessory signs, if we create this overlay, can the issue, can the notion of, and Councilmember Friedman touched on it, the notion of accessory versus non-accessory apply to the whole overlay? So in other words, if, as in the one example here, the, it does have a kind of ironic and bizarre feel to be saying this, doesn't it? If the Glendale Galleria has signage up that is advertising something at the Americana, would that necessarily be a non-accessory sign?
Not necessarily. If we look at the definition of accessory sign, it's any sign which carries advertisement incidental and related to the primary use of the premises or site.
Which could be the overlay.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. To me, this is a reason why the overlay is important as a concept and a way to go. And that, for that reason, I agree with Mayor Quintero on that point. The other reason is that, to me, the creation of the overlay also defines the locale, defines the location, and mitigates against the concern about setting a precedent. Because they are having to satisfy very specific criteria. In terms of size, perhaps, square footage, perhaps, use, definitely, and geographical I also have to agree, and I can't remember which one of my colleagues raised the issue, but certainly Mr. Hirsch pointed to it. The Galleria itself, you know, the design of the building, we look at it today and we say, you know, you really can't, as you point out, you really can't see what's in there. And it is a brick facade and it's, it is very consistent with architecture of the day when it was designed and constructed. In fact, I have to say, and it's just my own opinion, I assume anybody's going to necessarily agree with me, but this image of Central, the central side of Glendale Galleria, this one, I think is made far better by that signage being there. It does help to break up what are just solid walls. But my main, my main comment that I wanted to make at this point is, is this. As Mr. Weaver has referred to, Al Glendale has evolved over the years since he was a young man, growing up in this city, and, and we are probably, I guess, a little less than a generation apart, no offense, but...
Yeah, you said it, yeah.
But I said it anyway. However, the similarity is that when I grew up in the city of Glendale, as a young man, growing up here, it is also very different from that time. I mean, that's one thing, I'm sure you will agree with me. Glendale is not, not the city of Mr. Weaver's birth and it's not the city of my birth either. It is a very different city. And these are signs of a dynamic city. A city that is, has experienced some dynamic growth. It's one of the reasons, as I've said before, I stay in the city of Glendale. If it were still the city I grew up in, I would have been out of here a long time ago. This is part of that growth, in my view. It is something that we need to try. And I will support it. I will support it, however, with a sunset clause. I think that that is essential to getting my support on this. I want to see where it goes. And the reason I asked the question of Mr. Lemo and of Mr. Hirsch is because I wanted to see whether or not their respective corporate owners would be willing to say, okay, we're willing to invest the money and the promotion that goes along with this, but if it doesn't work out because of the aesthetic, or it doesn't work out because it is causing safety issues as people are driving or walking, as Chukisil pointed out as a possibility or a concern. If it doesn't work out because of other issues that we don't even foresee, that we will change it or modify it or work with staff or remove it. Seems to me that if they're willing to go to that expense, I'm willing to try that for a period of, of a year and a half or two. I know I've been long-winded, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you for the time.
Ms. Friedman, and then Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Not to draw this out anymore, since we are mostly giving just comments today, I wanted to just mention one thing that I forgot to bring up and then to give a few responses to Mr. Hirsch and Mr. Lemo and also to my colleague, Mr. Drayman. First is about the proposal number three, which is the Central Avenue Bridge. This is, if we were going to do this, this is not a portion of it that I would support. I think that it's too risky to have a giant sign that people might be reading on a bridge and the other side of which is a crosswalk that, you know, always has people in it. And that, to me, is a very problematic sign being right over a road. Just a few things caught my ears, and it goes back a little bit to the idea of precedent, which is, you know, one of my worries. Something that Mr. Hirsch had struck me, which is that, you know, the businesses are hurting and that this is something that we can do for you. I know, I agree, and I appreciate that and I do sympathize. But I think pretty much any merchant in the city could say that. I don't think it's unique to the Galleria. So to me, that's not a reason why we should do an overlay zone that's different from what we have in the rest of the city. In terms of the building, something that Mr. Drayman said struck me, which is that it's the architecture of the day. And I agree. But it's also something a little bit different, which is that it's shopping mall architecture. And it's an architecture that's still built today. And we see it on the Americana on the Colorado side. And it's unfortunate that they're built that way because in some ways, the shopping malls have created a lot of their own problems. That they are uninviting, they are not pedestrian-oriented, they run counter to the idea of an active streetscape and urban downtown. And while the signs might help with that, there are other solutions that would help with that. And I know that they're difficult because they involve your interior of your building, but piercing those buildings, putting windows, putting entrances, and that goes for both the Americana and the Galleria. The Colorado streetscape on the Americana is nowhere near as active as the other streetscapes, and it's really a shame because in a lot of ways, it's killed Colorado Boulevard. There's a few overtures, but not nearly enough to do anything for that road. And if we were going to, if you were really serious about bringing visual interest and activating the roads, you would really take a look at that. What you can do to bring pedestrians in and to also create an inviting streetscape for people who walk, because people do walk in this city and they want to walk. And it's not pleasant to walk around the Galleria and it's not pleasant to walk on Colorado behind the Americana. So that's a little bit off, on a tangent here, but it's the way that I feel. And to say that because you've created uninviting buildings with big blank walls, that now we should put billboards on them, that might be your solution. It wouldn't necessarily be my solution. And I would hate for people to come forward in the future in this city and say, I want these giant blank walls because at some point, I'm going to come in and ask for a variance for my giant building that doesn't have windows and doesn't have doors because the city did it there. And that really is the heart of my concern with this program, with the larger signs, not so much with the small signs. I don't find those problematic. And again, about just the commercialization of our, of our city and what people look at when they walk around. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Just to be clear on the, from my perspective, on the non-accessory, I'm definitely against it. It has to relate to the respective shopping centers. I'm okay with Central and Colorado, but absolutely not on Brand. I won't vote for it, I won't support it. Mr. Weaver?
Based on comments I heard, a couple of things, oh, three or four things. In terms, in geologic terms, geological terms, the hurt the retailers are having is microscopic. It's less than a second. That's a joke. Retailers hurting, everybody is hurting. And we're going to come out of this recession. I don't think it's over yet, I think it's going to get worse. But everybody's hurting, so as has been stated, yeah, I sympathize, but, you know, I can't vote based on that point. Mervens should be all, architecturally altered, that wall up there at what was the main intersection of Glendale, Brandon Broadway. Now, that used to be the Bank of America there, my father bank there. And right now, it's a wall. It ought to be all torn off and opened up. That'd take care of that problem. The entrances to the Americana, Friedman, we had those discussions of how to open up on Brand in all different directions for multitude of reasons, it ended up the way you see it today. As far as the Galleria, I'm sorry, I was sitting here and the Galleria ownership cost the city of Glendale millions of dollars. Only by a 51 to 49 percent vote of the public, of the residents of the city, was the Americana even built. You, the taxpayers, lost money having to fight the Galleria, and that sticks in my craw and always will, until the Galleria wants to give back all the money the city paid in defending the lawsuits. I know Mr. Caruso worked out a deal, he sued on a couple of good points and he won on them. And that's fine, but the city has not. As far as Galleria, I venture to say virtually everybody in this city has one time or another been to the Galleria. It's been here since the 1970s. And I'd be willing to bet a large majority of the public has now been to the Americana over the last year. It's only logical to me that you don't have to tell the Glendale people that have been there what's in there. They've seen it. So if you want to use the argument, the people coming in need to know. No, the, everybody, Caruso affiliated and the Galleria have done demographic studies of where their targeted audiences are. People that have come in from Studio City or North Hollywood or Los Angeles or, Pasadena, they're coming because the name Americana, they're coming for the name Galleria. They're not coming to look and see if there's a sign on there, they're to tell them what's inside so they can go in. inside so they can go in. They're coming because they're there. They don't need to see a sign to tell them. So to me, it's illogical to see, well, you need to put the sign up to help the retailers inside, because the people that are coming here in droves are going inside anyhow. So, I haven't heard anything to convince the other, oh, and the one last point Mr. Drayman asked, yeah, internal signs. Fine, I said that in the concierge area, you're going to put signs there. Are you putting in between the parking lot in the back? Target came in here and for a long time fought to get additional signage for the Target sign on that side. I have no problem there. Just when you put them out on Colorado Central and, and Brandon Broadway, that's where I have problems, at least to this point in time.
Mr. Drayman?
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, for raising that last point. I neglected to mention it, and for those on one side of the dais or the other that are keeping score of whatever consensus is occurring or not occurring, I also have no problem with the internal signage. I know Councilmember Friedman had mentioned it, but I, I went right over that note. So I, I have no problem with the internal signage. Is, thank you.
Okay, Mr., actually, Mr. Ajari, more comments?
Thank you. What I'd like to do would be to make a motion that would itemize some of these items that we do have some consent. I, I'm using that term loosely, because I haven't counted votes, I don't know who, but, but from some of the remarks that I have heard, that there is some support of, much has been left undiscussed, such as the other regulations included on page nine in the report, such as the exact location of the signs that we may or may not have support for. But I think I'm hearing that there is some support for the creation of an overlay zone with a sunset. I'll go to 18 months.
Are we voting on, are we, are we making a...
No, just direction only.
Giving direction. There's 18 months.
Ultimately, it'll come back.
Staff got direction? That's, I have to ask.
Well, that's the first question, whether Mr. Hagani and Mr. Landsafame have a feel for which way that he...
I could review some of the main policy directions as opposed to some of the specifics, and then if I, if I'm mistaken, I would appreciate any corrections you could give us. I believe we hear some consensus towards an overlay district, and then there is some, the, the sunset clause is somewhere between 18 months, maybe to 24 months, something to explore for us and bring some recommendations. We heard some concern and differences of opinion on, to whether or not on Broadway and on, on the brand and on the bridge, on Central, there, we're not sure if there's consensus on those particular sites, but there is some general consensus that the rest of the, the properties could probably take some signage.
Accessory.
Accessory versus non-accessory was clearly defined. I think we heard an option of having the accessory applied to the overlay zoning district as opposed to specific sites. I think these are the main points, and I think we have enough to work on the rest of the details that are spelled out in the staff report with the planning commission process.
And just to be clear, I'm not convinced yet about the larger signs, so you may have consensus, but you don't have, I think, maybe a unanimous vision.
Right.
But I'm certainly open to hearing what the planning depart, the planning commission recommends.
Right.
I think we all reserve our right to get into the details and object, or make suggestions or modifications.
Thank you.
But let's just take a, you know, a partial step towards there, so we can have staff...
Mr. Drayman?
My interpretation, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Hagani, Mr. Landsafame, is not that you hear accord on any one thing here, but that you hear general consensus on the concept of moving forward to a next step. Clearly, you don't hear unanimous support. And there are certain issues that I have heard individual agency and council members make about, I will not support this, or never will support that. So clearly, those are areas where there, there is not complete agreement. But I think that what you're hearing is a general consensus to move forward to the next step, and to have staff bring us back some options and suggestions and so on.
Understood.
We need a motion for that.
No, okay. I don't think we do, but I think it's important that you bear in mind that when it comes back, this is an overlay zone, so it's a legislative act. It is not a quasi, we're not looking at applying facts to a, a question of law like a variance. So it's a legislative act, and under our charter, requires a four-fifths vote. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that. Again, at this point in time, it's just direction, because it was an application for an overlay zone filed jointly by the owners of the Galleria and Americana brand. And so we have to continue processing that. What the applicants do with your comments, and now the direction to staff, also to take a look at things and address those, we'll be able to certainly do that. But ultimately, it will be coming back, you, in some form or another, as a, as a possible zone change.
Mr. Weaver?
I suggest that we consider having it in the evening hours. I don't know how informed the public is yet on this, it was on the press today. I don't know if, at least for the planning commission, that the public know about it in advance and, and stuff, because there's going to be strong feelings exhibited, I'm sure.
They will be at the evening hours. Both the planning commission meeting and the city council meetings will be at the evening hours.
Long night.
If I can, this would eventually be an ordinance, so it would have to be, if it's going to be adopted, it would need to be at an evening regular meeting.
Oh.
Okay, any other, Mr. Drayman?
Yes, I just wanted to ask a question, perhaps as Chair of the Agency. Is there anything else that, Mr. Hagani, you as our planning director, and you, Mr. Lands, and Mr. Director of Development Services with regard to the, the redevelopment area, have any other input that you feel we need to hear that we haven't heard?
I think, I personally think I've heard enough of a direction, and questions, the questions have been extremely helpful.
So Mr. Hagani says he's heard enough.
We're partners, we're partners in this, so. No, I think, I think I agree. We've heard enough to get your sense, and we know we need to work on some recommendations of those other nine points.
And how he's able to do his summaries is beyond me. Good job as usual, Mr. Hagani. All right, are there any other comments on this issue, questions? Okay, next.
Move adjourned for the city council?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Do we have a motion? For the agency?
Second. We're adjourned.